If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call, please.
Grandquist?
Here.
Aaron's?
Here.
Merrill? Sorry, McCarthy.
Here.
Sorry. Webb?
Here.
McCarthy? Muren?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Hildebrand?
Okay, with that, we will move to special items on the council's agenda. And the first is the swearing in of new council member Justin Snorton as Ward Three Council Representative. And doing the swearing in is our city attorney, Danny Nolte Myers.
I.
I.
Justin Snorton.
Justin Snorton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Ward Three.
Of Ward Three.
City Council Member.
City Council Member.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member.
And nor am I a member.
Of any political party.
Of any political party.
Or organization.
Or organization.
That advocates.
That advocates.
The overthrow of the government.
The overthrow of the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
That I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member.
Nor become a member.
Of any political party.
Of any political party.
Or organization.
Or organization.
That advocates.
That advocates.
The overthrow of the government.
The overthrow of the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Justin. It's all real now. There's no turning back. Please take your seat. All right. And to follow protocol, we will do another roll call with our new council member board.
Grandquist?
Here.
Aaron's?
Here.
Webb?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Snorton?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Hildebrand?
Very good. The next item on the agenda is a bittersweet one. It is a special recognition of Mr. Scott Cordis for 26 years of service to the citizens and the city of Norfolk. And as much as he's probably uncomfortable right now, we're going to ask you to come forward, Scott. Okay, Lyle first. You don't have to give your speech yet. Lyle's going to give a speech, not on your behalf, but as a prelude to your speech. Lyle, take it away for us, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Councils. Lyle Led, Director of Administrative Services, joined by my colleagues here. This could be rough for me, so I wrote it down, and we're going to give this a whirl. Feel free to jump in where you deem necessary. It is with great honor and great sadness that I bear the unfortunate news to the mayor, citizens, the council, and the citizens of this community, but yet also the great news to the wonderful state of Nebraska, Governor Pillen, fire departments across the state, and the state fire marshal's office. Over a quarter century ago, Assistant City Administrator and Public Safety Director Scott Cordis took a chance to leave a career with the state fire marshal's office that he was comfortable with and a community in which he was comfortable, where he was surrounded by friends and family. He elected to uproot his family and move to become part of Norfolk Fire. His time in the fire service started well before Norfolk, though. In 1982, he became a volunteer in Scrivener, before starting with the state fire marshal's office in 1986. He stayed with the state fire marshal's office until 1996, when he became the fire marshal for Norfolk Fire. He was promoted to Assistant Chief in 1997, promoted again to Fire Chief in 2011, where he became the 22nd Fire Chief since 1884. Scott became the Public Safety Director, Assistant City Administrator, in 2021. Throughout his 26 years of time here, he never buried his head in the sand when challenges were on the horizon. He never backed away from a difficult problem. If someone needed help, he was there. No questions asked. He shared the highs and the lows with those around him, and in doing so, left a trail of success and friendship in his wake, never calling attention to himself. A man of this character seldom goes unnoticed, and in this circumstance, the governor came calling when he needed help overseeing the state fire marshal's office. I can't blame the governor for making this decision, as I would do the exact same thing if I were in his position. On February 10th, will likely mark the last day of Scott's 26 years of commitment to the community. February 20th, President's Day, is when Scott will begin the next chapter in this life, which takes place in Lincoln, working for Governor Pillen as the appointed state fire marshal. Councilman Snorton, it is unfortunate you didn't get to work with him for very long. I'm confident that you would have enjoyed it as much as he would have enjoyed working with you. The citizens, the staff, and the elected officials are better today because we have had the opportunity to work with Scott. And to the governor and the state fire marshal employees, I'm sure they're all watching at home. If you don't recognize the gem that will be joining your team yet, you will soon. Remember that he came from Scrivener and via Norfolk. I'm not going to demand or request that Scott speaks tonight to this agenda item, since that is in your realm to choose, Mayor. However, if Scott is given the opportunity to speak and chooses not to, understand that it isn't due to a mountain of appreciation that he has for each and every one of you as much as it is how heavy of a decision this is for him and the emotions that would come from speaking in this setting. If you have the opportunity, please thank him for his commitment to community, a career well-served, and wish him blessings on his next endeavor. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you, Lyle.
Mayor and Council, I'd just add, you know, to come forth tonight and not to speak about Scott a little bit would be a huge mistake on my part, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be up here in front of all of you. With things in life, you go along years, and many people along the way gave you advice of be observant of those around you and pick and choose little things about those leaders that you might desire to be like or emulate, and things that you maybe don't like, but then formulate your own style of leadership and build that in anything that you do in life, whether it's the fire service, Police Division, wherever you're at, wherever your life takes you. And over the last 20 years, being at Norfolk Fire and getting to work for and alongside Scott Cordis, I can tell you that there were many pages that I've taken out of his school of leadership and ability to instruct and make people better, more than he'll ever know. And in order to be successful in this business and have an impact on the fire service, you have to have strength, strong faith, and a strong family. And that person's here with him this evening. And I'm very grateful to Laura and Scott and their kids and grandkids and all the sacrifices you've made over the years to make not only the fire department better, but this city better. And I am very excited for you and your next chapter. You will be missed, my friend, but as Lyle stated, you're going to do great things, and I'm very proud to call you a friend and wish you nothing but the best.
Mayor and Council, I'd also like to take the opportunity to publicly thank Scott Cordis. I've worked with him during his entire career with the city of Norfolk in various positions, most recently as the Fire Chief and then the Public Safety Director. Every position Scott's ever held, he's led with integrity and honesty, and he's made everybody who's worked with or for him a better person. The city is a better place because of his efforts. He will be missed dearly within the city of Norfolk, but as others have said, it's bittersweet. While we're going to miss him, I know that the state fire marshal's going to be a better place, and Scott will excel in anything and everything he chooses to do. So I'd like to publicly thank Scott for his effort and appreciate calling him a friend.
Again, thank you, Lyle, Chief Miller, Chief Rogge. And Scott, while you decide whether or not you'd like to say a few words, I'll say a few words on behalf of the elected officials. Lyle said it very well, we're all better for having worked with you. It's hard to know where to begin talking about your long career of service to the city of Norfolk, but in so many ways, you were a paragon of public service. You dedicated your career to making Norfolk a safe, livable, and welcoming city for all, and you did it with professionalism and dignity and grace and compassion. Personally, I've very much enjoyed getting to know you and getting to work with you. And I think on behalf of all the elected officials, we can say the same thing, that we thank you, we're proud of you. You've served us well, and the state's gain in this regard is our loss. We wish you well.
Thank you, sir. Wow. I'd love to stand here and tell you that I'm full of strength and the ability to stand strong here, but I'm kind of weak. Anybody that knows me knows I get emotional about the things that I care about. I'm not sure I'm worthy of all the nice things that were said here tonight. I'm quite sure I'm not, but nonetheless, I appreciate the kindness. It means a lot to me. It means a lot. I beg the council's indulgence. I normally don't come to these meetings in casual attire, but my wife and I just pulled into town from visiting our son in Chicago. So I woke up in Chicago, and I arrived here just moments ago, and so bear with me on not being dressed for a normal council meeting, but... We make choices in life. We make choices. And I remember 26 years ago, when my wife and I labored about bringing four kids to a community I hardly knew anyone. And you want to do the right thing, you want to make the right decision as parents, as people, as spouses. We try to do that. Sometimes we get it right, and sometimes, in spite of our best efforts, we don't. When I reflect back on my time here and the privileges that I've gotten to serve this community and the opportunity to lead in the manner that I'd asked for, we got that decision right 26 years ago when we chose to come here. This community's been good to me, good to my family, and I'm grateful for the opportunities and the blessings that have come to my family and to my life because of the city of Norfolk. So there's a lot of memories that are going to stick in my mind. I could tell stories all night. Bethine, you'd have to hold up the five-minute card quite a bit. I promise I won't do that to you. There's some things that will stick in my mind forever, but most importantly are the people, the relationships. They're lasting, and they have great meaning to me and my family, and I will never forget my time here. I will never forget the people that impacted my life in so many ways. I'm blown away by the kindness shown to me here tonight. It matters, and I appreciate you all very much. So on behalf of my wife and my family, thank you for giving me a shot 26 years ago to be a part of your world, and I will always be blessed for having that opportunity. Thank you all very much.
Well, once again, Scott, you've served us all very well. Thank you, and Godspeed. And now, we will move on to item number seven on the council agenda, and that is approval of the consent agenda, though we have a correction. And Bethine and Dan, you can help me with this. Correction for item number 24 on the consent agenda. I think we're changing East Omaha Avenue to East Norfolk Avenue. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So with that change, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion with the change noted on item 24. Second?
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, item number eight. I would look for a motion to approve the full agenda, again with a couple of corrected items on items number 32 and 33, of which we will replace the word "ratify" with "submit" for both items.
I'll make a motion to approve with the changes on 32 and 33.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All members present voting in the affirmative.
All right, that takes us to special presentations. Item number 26, a review of the library's annual report. And to hear that, we'll hear from Jessica Chamberlain. Jessica, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight just to present the library's annual report as required per state statute. The library's activities and statistics are reviewed every month by our library board. They get monthly reports from us, and then they meet every other month and review them in person. We talk about policies. They give us direction and feedback. They hear from people in the community, and so that's how they are involved, and then they ratify this, and you see their affidavit thereafter they've reviewed this. So I won't read it verbatim, just hit some highlights here in case, and of course, answer any questions that you might have afterwards. This was the first year in a long time. We actually had a slight reduction in our number of registered borrowers. However, our library visits were up about 27%, so we certainly were not less busy. It's been nice to see a lot of our statistics go back to some of those more pre-COVID levels of activity and attendance at things. So, and then looking at kind of the bottom line there, we count items that get checked out of the library, items that get used in the library, digital usage of eBooks and databases we provide, and when we put all of that together and look at that, we had an increase of 5% last year over total usage of things the year before. So that's always good to see. Our library programs, again, also the trend of going back to pre-COVID sorts of things. We had a 35% increase in the number of programs that we offered and almost a 140% increase in attendance. So almost three times as many people came to those programs. So that was really nice. We had a really busy summer, and so that was wonderful to see. On the flip side of the report is the library collections, and this is just a tally of the items that we started off with, how many we add, how many we take away, and then how many we end up with. And every year, we have to withdraw items. They might get lost or damaged by patrons. They might be superseded and a new edition comes out, or they might be something that sits there and hasn't gone out and checked out in a long, long time, and so it's time to take it off the shelf and give something new a chance to be used and enjoyed by the public. So you'll see those totals there. And then under our finances, of course, the city of Norfolk is our primary funder. That's where we get most of our funding from. But we do pursue state and federal grants and other grant opportunities whenever we can. So last year, we were lucky enough to get quite a few of those to supplement some staff training, some collections, some building improvements, and things like that. So that's kind of the 20,000-foot view level of the annual report. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Jessica? I guess I would just say those increases in usage of services and programming are not a surprise to me, and I think they're a testament to the work that you and the staff do to keep things at the library interesting and lively and animating and compelling for people to use. So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Any other comments, questions regarding the library report? Thank you, Jessica.
Thanks.
Now, item number 27, a proclamation for February 2023 as Joy of Reading Month. I will read the proclamation. It reads as such: "Whereas reading is a skill that only gets better with practice and is essential to a child's success in school, whereas there's more to reading than homework and class assignments, and there is an endless number of fun and interesting books out there waiting to be discovered, and older students can use their influence to encourage younger children to read more. And Norfolk's joy, junior optimist, octagon, international members, believe they can make a difference by encouraging their peers and younger students to read more books and thus improve their reading skills. And whereas the city of Norfolk values its young service leaders and their efforts to make a difference in our community by mentoring younger readers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Joy of Reading Month, and the city of Norfolk encourage all citizens to take due notes of the observance." Do we have some folks here tonight to receive the proclamation? Looks like we do. How are you guys?
Good.
Good. I'm going to make you talk a little bit. Not a big speech or anything, but can you tell us your name and what grade you're in and what school you go to?
My name is Gabriella McHorter. I'm in sixth grade and I go to Norfolk Middle School.
My name is Ariana McHorter. I'm in sixth grade and I go to Norfolk Middle School.
I'm Caitlin Betterman. I am in fifth grade and I go to Norfolk Middle School.
My name is Gracie Robinson, and I'm a sixth grader at the Metro.
So, very good. How long have you guys been involved with the Joy?
I'm in sixth grade. Just my second.
Very good. All right.
Sorry to miss you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your service and what you're doing to mentor younger readers, right? Okay. I've got the proclamation. Who wants to hold it? We're going to get a picture. Okay? All right, thank you. Okay, that takes us to public hearings and related action portion of the council agenda. Item number 28. We'll open this public hearing to consider amending the City of Norfolk Economic Development Plan to provide for a workforce housing plan. And to kick off and introduce the hearing, we'll hear from Candace Alder, City Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Welcome, Councilman Snorton. So we're bringing forward an amendment or a proposed amendment to the city's economic development plan. So this plan was adopted in 2010, and it allows for changes and amendments to be made if new legislation is passed after the initial legislation is passed. So Randy, you correct me if I'm off on any of this, but in 2016, the Nebraska Legislature passed new LB 1059, which allows for the adoption of workforce housing to be incorporated into communities' economic development plans. And so what we've put in front of you would allow for additional uses to be additional or new eligible activities to be used for these funds. And so what we're seeking to do is incorporate this new language, which you'll find in your packets. The Workforce Housing Fund is substantiated by a 2021 housing study that was conducted by Hannah Kealan. That housing study actually calls for 769 new housing units to be constructed here within the community by 2026. It also includes language that discusses no provisions would be made for housing for persons of lower moderate income and indicates that due to the lack of available housing within the city, existing businesses are having difficulty recruiting new employees. So right now, our current unemployment rate is at 2%. And I did look at just the available jobs within our ZIP code that have been posted within the past month and found 1,873 jobs just within 68701. So on top of that, I asked staff members to just call around to different apartment complexes to see what the availability was. Over the past few weeks, staff's been working on that and called the 14 largest apartment complexes here within the community to try to gauge availability within those. They only found 12 available units. So that's not a comprehensive look at all of the rental units within the community, but the newer ones and the larger complexes that we have are full. Many of them do have waiting lists. And so what we're doing and why we're really proposing this new amendment to this plan is because next week, if approved, next council meeting, I should say, we're going to bring forward an application for LB 840 funds that's been submitted by Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska. And in that, we're going to propose and talk to you a little bit about how we could use those funds to be put up as a grant match for rural workforce housing funds to the state of Nebraska. So really, what we'd like to do is to offer for your consideration the opportunity to use the remaining LB 840 funds as a grant match against those state dollars that could then create a revolving loan fund here within the community in our two-mile zoning jurisdiction. That would be perpetual in nature. And so those funds could be lent out or loaned to housing developers for new development, for the rehabilitation of housing development, as long as it meets the criteria that the state set forth as workforce housing. So that's a... I kind of, I just wanted to put that out there. I did ask Roger Nagical and members of his team to come tonight, just in case we did want to talk a little bit about that rural workforce housing fund and what that would look like, but that will also be discussed in depth at the February 21st meeting if this is approved. Now, Randy, if we amend the economic development plan, it has to be approved by a two-thirds majority, correct?
That's correct. So it needs six votes?
Do you have any questions for me as it relates to this?
Thank you, Candace. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Hearing, seeing no one, I will move to close the hearing and advance to item 29. We'll look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5819 approving an amendment to the economic development plan to adopt a workforce housing plan as part of the economic development plan and allow housing, construction, and rehabilitation as eligible activities.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5819.
Second?
Motion second. Any discussion on this, Council?
Yeah, I do maybe a question for Randy. We really don't have anything allocated for that 840 right now, those funds. Is that right? And that's why we're looking to expand this into that workforce arena?
Yes, we've been trying to get the last of these funds utilized before the end of our fiscal year on September 30, 2024, because that's when our program terminates. because that's when our program terminates. So, this, we've since had another application come forward. I'm not sure if it's a complete application or not. We haven't reviewed it yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Randy, how much do we have in that fund?
We've got 326,000 or something like that. You don't remember the exact number.
300,746.
And we hadn't, we weren't gonna allocate that money to anything else, Candace? We had no plans for that money? But now, we want to match a grant, possibly, correct? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah. Right now, we have not had any applications that have come forward that have been reviewed or completed.
Okay.
We have had some submissions, but they've been incomplete or they haven't lined up the rest of their financing, so...
And this money legally has to be spent by the end of this fiscal year?
To remain in the economic development fund, it does need to be spent by the end of, or allocated by the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, if this isn't spent by the end of our fiscal year, and there's a process and statutes whereby you take that money and use it for the next 10 years to reduce your property tax. So, it'd be about a $30,000 per year reduction in property tax if this money is not spent by the end of September 30, 2024. 23, I mean.
Okay. What was that reduction? Again, Randy, I didn't hear you. On the property tax?
Yes.
Once the LB-840 is done?
Once our plan ends on September 30th of 2023, then that money's set aside if it's not spent and used for the next 10 years for reduction in property tax. So, that 300,000 would be divided by 10, and a little over $30,000 a year that would go to reduce your property tax asking.
The LB-840 was a voter-approved property tax increase. I mean...
Yes. I think that's the theory behind it.
I guess one thing about this, I didn't know if we'd get into a lot of discussion about this night, but, you know, LB-840, initially, it's about 400,000 collected per year, and that was over a course of 10 years. Majority of that went to the gas line that came into the community. And then, in the meantime, I think we had, what, three companies apply and receive the LB-840 funds? I think it was three. Or maybe just two?
Yeah, I believe it was. We had Premier Senior Marketing was the first one, and then we had the...
Peterson Act system.
Regulation company, I'm trying to think what their name was.
Peterson Act.
So, it's, I mean, essentially, it got used as a good economic development tool, but it really wasn't much of an economic tool. I mean, from, I remember being really excited about this and thinking, oh, well, those businesses will pick up on it. So, it has been hard for them to find companies that qualify for that 300,000, utilize that in a business expansion sense. So, when this opportunity came up, those funds to go that route, this is gonna give us opportunity for that 300,000 to go be used, but then can be used again and again and again within the community. So, it's not a bad way to look at it, I mean, moving forward. So...
I think I'd agree. That's why probably legislature looked at different ways of using it, which would be workforce housing. And in our case, this sounds like an excellent deal, where it's a revolving fund that will pay us dividends in the future. It's a good thing.
Any other discussion? Questions? Thank you, Candace.
Thanks, Candace.
All right. If no further discussion or public input? If not, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, to amend the City of Norfolk Economic Development Plan to provide for a workforce housing plan to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All members present voting in the affirmative.
To meet the timeline that for Roger's grant application, we'd like to have this approved on all three readings.
Yeah. With no opposition, I'd make a motion to move to pass this ordinance on second and third.
I'll second that.
Motion second to spend the rules and approve on second and third readings. No discussion, please vote.
All members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5819 passes on all three readings.
All right. That takes us to our regular agenda and item number 30. We look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5814 approving a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial District to R-1 Single Family Residential District on property addressed as 301 South 8th Street. As a note, this ordinance was tabled at the December 5th City Council meeting, passed on first reading at the December 19th Council meeting, and passed on second reading at the January 17th Council meeting.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5814.
Second.
Motion at second. And since there is no discussion on third reading, I will ask for your vote.
Council members Grandquist, Webb, McCarthy, Snorton, and Clausen voting yes. Aaron's and Miren no. This ordinance passes on third reading.
All right. That takes us to item number 31. I would look for a motion to consider Resolution 2023-8 to ratify a grant application for $190,734 to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for Economic Development Administration Tourism Funds for infrastructure development along the Norfolk River and authorization for mayor or city staff to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the grant.
I'll make a motion for resolution number 2023-8.
Second.
Motion at second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Candace?
Bethany, could I have the overheads? They went to sleep. I don't know how to wake them up, but as we're working on that, just push the power buttons again. I thought it would be helpful to pull up this tract. So, our office worked alongside other city staff in Public Works and Parks to apply for this grant. It's an economic development, Nebraska Economic Development Administration tourism grant. And it's only allowed to be used within a qualified census tract. And different communities throughout the state have these designated QCTs, they call them. And it's what the funds received by the state of Nebraska from the federal government, ARPA funds, this is where they can be used in. So, we have requested $190,734 of economic development tourism funds to be used on a portion of the riverfront project that's located within this QCT. This is gonna be for the put-in, the very first put-in, and kind of that launch pad. And I'll let Steve elaborate on that. But it's also going to be used to put a paved parking lot in there and then ADA access down to the first river put-in. So, Steve, do you have anything to add on that?
That put-in location is at the southern end of Winter Park, right north of Elm Avenue. Elm and Third, just, it's very south edge of Winter Park.
So, the state of Nebraska is looking for projects that were located within this QCT area that are going to increase tourism for the state, improve infrastructure functionality, accessibility for those with disabilities, and then enhancements that provide long-term increases in tourism activity and provides public access to outdoor recreational opportunities. No matching funds were required as a part of this grant. And if awarded, the grant funds will cover just that portion within that QCT area.
I've got a question. So, was this put-in area already part of the program before? And this is just gonna help fund those, that, with the funds that are already pre-approved for this budget? Does that make sense? Is this, is this additional spending or picking up spending that's already allocated?
The majority of this is current spending. So, the existing project has a gravel lot in it. This would fund about 130, just shy of 132,000 of the existing project. And then, there was about 55,000 additional to go ahead and pave that.
So, you don't see like an increase to the overall cost? You know, if you're doing...
That 55,000 would be an increased cost. The other 132,000 roughly is going into, to the project budget. So, it'd be a funding source into the project budget.
A funding source to project budget with, but as a change order for increase, right?
When...
Just trying to get my mind wrapped up.
The 132,000 would be used as part of the funding for the existing scope of the project.
Okay.
There's an additional, as we were putting together grant, realizing that, I mean, we just did not pave that portion of the project, just trying to cut back when we originally did the design. But if, also, that's an area currently that we use to put our snow in. So, that's gonna, ultimately, this, the project, regardless of whether or not this grant comes in, is gonna be forcing us to look at alternate locations for snow piles. But, yeah, so 132,000 of this is for the existing scope of the project. About 55,000 is to add the paving of the parking lot to it.
Candace, maybe I missed it, but so, why is that area so large? Or how did you come up with that area?
So, this area is not dictated by the City of Norfolk. This is dictated by poverty levels within this area, or income levels, I should say, within specific areas. So, the federal government will look at federal census tracts and determine where they're gonna allocate their funding based on that. So, this wasn't, this area was not determined by us. This was determined that the federal government determined that they were going to use these ARPA funds specifically within these areas. That's how the state of Nebraska is.
It's a hub zone, right? The hub zone.
Qualified census tract.
Because if you look at the hub zoning in state of Nebraska, this is a part of that. Isn't that where it comes from?
I'm not familiar with hub zones.
Yeah.
I would, I would say it's the same data that's driving the census tract, qualified census tract, that's driving that HUD zone. Yeah.
HUD zone. I thought you said hub. Like, I don't know what a hub zone is. Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Thank you, Candace. Thank you to staff for looking creatively at alternate ways to save existing current budgeted funds from the city, replacing those here with state grant funds potentially. If no further discussion, please vote.
All members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2023-8 passes.
Takes us to item 32. Would look for a motion to consider Resolution 2023-9 to submit a grant application for qualified census tract recovery funds to be submitted to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, requesting an amount up to $3,500,000 in QCT infrastructure funds for upgrades to the Norfolk Water Pollution and Control Plant and authorizing the mayor or city staff to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the grant.
Before I offer for consideration 2023-9, back on item 31, 2023-8, is that to ratify a grant application or submit?
So, 31 was to ratify.
31 is to ratify.
That grant application was submitted on the second.
Okay.
Items 32 and 33 are to submit. Those, those grant applications are due on Friday.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify. I will offer for consideration Resolution 2023-9.
Second.
Motion at second. And Candace, once again.
So, I left this image out because this is a different grant that we are going to be pursuing, but it is the same census tract. So, item 32, just, just to give you a heads up, the resolution that's associated with Resolution number 2023-9, I would like to request an amendment on this. There was a typo on this and indicates that we're authorized to request a grant application and apply for a grant from the Nebraska Forest Service, and that's actually supposed to be to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. So, I'd request that amendment be made if this resolution is approved. And what we're looking to do is submit a grant application that would allow us to apply for up to $3.5 million to an infrastructure grant. So, this QCT recovery grant has six different designations that they are, that they extended to communities that had these qualified census tracts. And so, we as a staff came together and took a look at different projects that would either be located within the qualified census tract or qualify based on the, how it's going to affect those that live in the qualified census tract. So, because this particular, the Norfolk Water Pollution and Control Plant affects the entire community, and I'll let Steve speak to the specifics of that, we decided to bring this forward as a consideration. It really, for infrastructure grants, it has to, we had to provide a tangible benefit to individuals or small businesses within that QCT. So, I'll let Steve elaborate on the project itself.
Steve, before you do that, do we have to? I think we have to bring this forward for consideration as amended before we, am I wrong? Before we go further?
We, she can do the, we can have the discussion, and then as long as we do the motion to amend, and that's voted on before it's considered in final form. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, Steve.
Yeah. So, so the QCT tract grant that Candace's team is working on here identifies, you know, economic development within this area. It would be, as we, you're aware that we're, we've been working on and had bid out this past fall, an improvement to our grit removal facility out at WPC. That grit removal facility is our, is our, that point of the plant. It's the very front end of the plant, what we call the headworks. But that point in the plant is the pinch point. It defines what we refer to as our firm capacity or the ultimate capacity of that. The project that we're proposing to do out there would essentially double the firm capacity of the plant with this one project. And so, it would have a, you know, as we look at this particular census tract and economic development up in here, being able to take, take the flows that would develop this project, this grant would help fund that ability of us as a community to take any significant increase in flows up here due to economic development in this area. The, the way the grant is structured, Candace's team continues to work with the, the grant folks to define exactly what we're going to submit for. This allows us to submit for up to 3.5 million, which we would match 100%. The total grant value that they're going to be administering in this round of grants is about 10 million. So, ultimately, we may cut this back as we continue to work with Candace's team, but it, it would allow us to do up to 3.5 million.
Further discussion?
I guess who, what, at what point do we know where we need to have that total dollars?
So...
Two million or better?
Well, right, right now, the project has a shortfall based on the, the bid letting that was, we did last fall. And it was late November, we opened bids on that. But we have a shortfall of about three and a half million, which is why we identified it at this point. If the, if we do submit it and we were, and we were to get to three and a half million, that project would be fully funded. We're, we're still just working on exactly what value we want to submit. And we'll have to-
Can that number be changed? If we approve the three and a half million now, we can change that number?
Well, you're, yeah. The way we've, we're asking you to approve up to three and a half million.
Thank you.
When are grant awards expected to be announced on this? Do we have any idea?
They expect to announce them yet in February.
Really? Okay.
Hey, if, let's say we don't get the three and a half million, is there, I know, I know we need it, want it because we're over by three and a half. But if that would happen, is this a grant that is coming about, coming back again next year? Do we know that ten million again next year? Do we have any idea?
I would imagine not because they're ARPA funds.
I, I would agree. I think this is a one, one-time grant.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Any public input? Yes, Danny, clarify what the motion for an amendment would need to include?
Yes. So within the body of the agenda package that was already published, towards the, towards the bottom of the resolution language, it reads that the city of Norfolk is off, being authorized to request a grant application and to apply for a grant from the Nebraska Forest Service. I am looking for a motion that would change that language from the Nebraska Forest Service to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development.
I'll make a motion to change to Nebraska Economic Development, Nebraska Department of Economic Development.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All members voting in the affirmative on the amended resolution two thousand twenty-three nine is adopted.
Okay. The amendment is, the amendment to the resolution is adopted. We will now consider the underlying amended resolution. Any further discussion on the resolution? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All members voting in the affirmative, two thousand twenty-three nine passes and is adopted.
Takes us to item thirty-three. Would look for a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-three-ten to submit a grant application for qualified census tract recovery funds to be submitted to Nebraska Department of Economic Development, requesting eighty-one thousand, five hundred fifty-eight dollars of QCT planning funds for a city of Norfolk Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and authorizing the mayor or city staff to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the grant. Do I hear a motion?
I make the motion.
Second. Motion second. And Candace, one more time.
Thank you. So this also is a QCT recovery grant. This would be under the planning designation. And so we're bringing forward before you a second resolution under this qualified census tract recovery grant. I also would note that the language within this resolution will also need to be amended to adjust Nebraska Forest Service to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. These funds, it would be to go towards the City Norfolk Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We're requesting eighty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and putting forth a match of nine thousand sixty-two dollars for a total project cost of ninety thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Nate's not here to speak on this, but I think Andy could probably help me out with it. Nate did come forward and present the master planning for the Parks Division a couple of weeks ago. And so we, we thought that this fit very nicely into what the grants was calling for. With the planning grants, there actually has to be a development that follows that, the master planning. And so we've identified Liberty Bell Park as the park that's within the qualified census tract. That would then be the next step for the implementation of the master planning because it would be one of those parks, obviously, within the full master plan. Any questions?
Thank you, Candace. So these, these funds, this grant, this wasn't actually something that he knew about or Nate knew about when he first presented his request for the master plan?
No.
This came up after?
Correct.
Is there a timeframe that you have to use these funds by once you receive them?
Planning grants must be completed by December thirty-first.
Of the following year?
This year.
This, this, yeah. From what I know, the, these map, the, the hub zone map is changing in July. So I don't know if that is going to affect the application process because if it changes and this map changes and all, so what you're alloc, you're, you're focusing on isn't there, I don't know if that's going to change the fact that you award the grant or if you can use those funds. Or maybe it's a one-time deal where they award the grant and that's, you have till December to use it.
I would have a hard time in, correct me if I'm misunderstanding you, in the state of Nebraska indicating that we would need to-
If the map changed.
Use the funds, yeah. Use the funds in this qualified census tract and then change the census tract. Because I think they're looking for-
Because on their website, it says July first, possible-
Okay.
Changing of map. That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I'm-
It'd be pretty hard to see awarding the grant then, even if they did change the map, right?
Any other questions or comments? Public input.
Jim McQuaid, I guess I just had a follow-up question. It sounded like there's a requirement for a park development project, Liberty Bell, that's part of this. And if so, if there's something determined for that and if there's already funds set aside for that. So just trying to understand what that requirement is for that.
Just to clarify that question, there are some funds set aside for Liberty Bell Park that the council has authorized. But that does not cover the entire plan for the project for Liberty Bell. Right now, there is a private entity that's wanting to do a larger plan for Liberty Bell. And they're going to be opening up that discussion here at a future council meeting. Then we'll be able to talk a little bit more about that to do more. So basically, what this would do is allow, the project that Jim's referencing that we have to have is work we were already planning to do in Liberty Bell that would benefit from this master plan. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of planning going on in, in Liberty Bell with plans to do some. But obviously, more grant funds and more opportunities we have for planning will allow us to do more down the road.
Thank you, Andy. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, please vote. No, I'm sorry. We need amendment on this as well.
This amendment is going to be similar to the previous amendment. If you look towards the bottom of the resolution where it says, "And to apply for a grant from the Nebraska Forest Service," I would be looking for a motion for it to read, "And to apply for a grant from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development."
I'll make a motion for resolution number twenty twenty-three-ten to change to Nebraska Department of Economic Development.
Second that.
Motion second. No further discussion on the amendment, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative to make the amendments to resolution twenty twenty-three-ten.
Okay. Again, we are considering the underlying motion as amended. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty twenty-three-ten is adopted.
Right. It takes us to item thirty-four. Look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty twenty-three- eleven, authorizing the city of Norfolk to submit an application to FEMA for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program grant under DR four six one six for improvements at the city of Norfolk's Water Pollution Control Plant and authorization for mayor to execute all related documents.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-three- eleven.
Second.
Motion second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director.
Mayor and council, this grant would allow us to move Capital Improvement Project thirty-five, listed under the WPC Capital Improvement List. This would allow us to move that project forward. What that is, is a flood wall surrounding the wastewater treatment plant. A series of screw pumps then that would allow us to lift effluent over the wall and discharge that in the Elkhorn River. We've been, it's a, we've had a lot of conversation with Nebraska Emergency Management Association as we've been identifying that project post the twenty nineteen flood and looking for ways to move that forward. NEMA was actually instrumental in, in working with us on this and bringing this one actually to our attention. It has a, a lower local match threshold than some of the other grants that are out there. This grant does not put us into a, a competition amongst all states. This would just be a grant that would be awarded within Nebraska. So we are asking here for one million, I think, one million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand. This would substantially build out that flood wall and that screw pump system. The actual line item in our CIP budget is for about three point two million. The balance of that is some concrete paving around the top or on the top of that flood wall. And we would pursue that at a later date. Also, within that CIP budget, we have budgeted up to eight hundred thousand for local match on grants.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions?
So with, with this grant, is that, you said that bumps up the time of construction?
We would, we would be able to move the project forward. Yeah. It is designed. We would just kind of need to put it into its own set of bid documents, then move that forward.
Any further questions or discussion? Public input. Hearing none, please vote.
All members voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty twenty-three eleven is adopted.
All right. Takes us to item thirty-five. Would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight twenty, amending section three dash two-nine of the city code to require a hearing on liquor license applications.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-eight twenty.
Motion and second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Danny, please.
Thank you, mayor. Prior to October twentieth of two thousand and eight, the city code reflected that hearings were to be held on liquor license applications and a resolution was to be forwarded to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission either approving or denying the issuance of a license. For several years prior to two thousand and eight, however, the city's actual practice was to forward a letter of no recommendation to the liquor commission rather than hold a hearing. In order to reflect the practice of what was actually being done, the city passed an ordinance on October twentieth, two thousand and eight, which amended section three twenty-nine to remove the requirement for a hearing and to remove section three thirty-three related to review procedures and automatic renewal of liquor licenses. The Nebraska Liquor Control Commission has recently requested that the city hold hearings on liquor license applications. This ordinance will amend section three dash twenty-nine to require hearings on liquor license applications. Because this is something different than what we have previously done before, I, I will understand if the council has any questions on what that process could look like or what will be considered at that hearing moving forward.
I don't know if I have a question on that because I believe I was in the subcommittee meeting. But from what I recall, we might have been the only city that put in letters of no recommendation?
We are one of two cities currently, correct.
And so they asked us to follow along with everybody else, basically, in suit?
Yes.
They would be, yeah, the Liquor Control Commission.
What would that hearing look like?
So just for, for everybody out there, I think that it's important to note that as soon as this would pass on all three readings, the city staff intends on publishing a chart as well as a informational pamphlet on our website to make it easier for people going through this process. But I want to point out, first of all, this will only be, this hearing will only be for new licenses and for change of ownership. So last year, there was approximately six new licenses and five change of ownership. So it won't be for all of them that we see. Simple renewals, we won't have hearings on. But in the event that we do have a, a liquor license application that is brand new, that will be, that will come from the Liquor Control Commission, that will go straight to the city clerk's office. From there, we have forty-five days to add that to an agenda. And during that time, our, our police department will do a background check. And when it comes before the, the city council will have a hearing where we'll consider a number of items. And as laid out in the ordinance, there will be a process that will follow. But there's a, a number of items that are statutorily required to be considered during that process. We will allow testimony from people who support the issuance of that license as well as people who would be against that for varying reasons. At the time that we, that we would hear, that we would have that hearing, the city council would have that hearing. And there would be four options. It would be either approval of the application. There'd be a, basically saying that there needs to be stipulation, so kind of a middle ground, or a denial.
Which will speed up the process for the operator to get their license?
Yes. Ultim, ultimately, what we've been doing now results in, I mean, it, it takes a little bit longer because of the fact that now it will go, it has to go within forty-five days on an agenda. That should hopefully speed that up for bar owners, liquor license applicants, things of that nature.
So I mean, we've been doing it one way for years, you know? What's the reasoning behind the change?
So in talking with, in talking with the, the liquor commission when we went down there to speak to them, the basis for the, the conversation was to talk to them about some pending legislation that's going on with the state legislature right now. And the city's position on that was kind of coming from a, a goal of local control. And so in that similar vein, the director down there, his name is Hobie, he asked us to consider this because ultimately, if we're not having hearings, we're, you know, we're saying we want local control on things. And that's, that's obviously the, the goal of a lot of, you know, municipalities and city councils is to have some local control. Here, we weren't, we weren't issuing that. We weren't having that local control because we were ultimately saying, well, we're just gonna, we're gonna pass it off to the state for them to make the decision. So this gives us a chance to hear the applicants, people for, people against, for, for whatever reason. And then for us to have that first bite at the apple, if you will, and then send it to the state for final approval. And again, we are one of two cities that currently does not do that. Everybody else within the state of Nebraska does have that hearing and follows that full process that, that the commission laid out.
You mentioned four potential outcomes and stipulations. What would those stipulations parameters look like?
I'm not exactly sure what that, what that would look like. So you can either approve it, you can have, we could make no, I, I guess I should, I should back up. So we, we'd either approve the application outright, we could do a no recommendation, and what we could include stipulations in there. I don't know what those would look like. They would probably be in accordance with the, the, there's a list of reasons why you would approve or deny one. And I, I can kind of go through that. Maybe something with noise, something- Maybe something with noise, something of that nature, opening time, closing times. So we could put stipulations on there. We could do a no recommendation and just, just how we do it now, not have any stipulations. You know, just send it on to the state for the state to make the decision, or we would deny it. But would you, would you want me to list the reasons for you that we would consider as part of that hearing? Would that be, okay?
Danny, do you have any numbers that show if the state has ever denied an application?
I do not have those numbers. I'm sure, I'm sure that we have them. I'm just, I apologize, I do not have those in front of me right now.
I guess I just, remembering back that far, I'm kind of getting to be the old guy in this group. But I think in some of that discussion back then was, why do we waste everybody's time going through all this work when they never deny an application? So that's why we came up with the format that we did.
You, you were correct. So when we had the subcommittee meeting on, let me, let me, it was in November. On November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, we had that conversation about why we ended up at this process where we're at now. And Chief Miller said, he, he talked a little bit about the history on that. It sounds like there was a biker bar in Norfolk where there was a situ, there was a situation where there were constant fights, things of that nature. So when the renewal came around, the, the city had recommended, there is a process for renewals that the city can recommend for whatever reason and lay out those reasons. But the city did recommend that it didn't get renewed. However, when it went to the, the state, the liquor commission chose to renew it anyways, and I think that frustrated the elected officials at that time. And I think the mindset at that time was, well, if, if they're just gonna do it anyways, what is, what is the point? When we went down and spoke with the liquor commission about that, I think their justification was, well, in the, in the hundreds of applications, that was, that was kind of one bad apple, if you will, and they asked us to reconsider our policy.
Right. Any other questions or discussion on this? I think ultimately it does, it's probably a good thing for us to have more direct involvement and not just punt these decisions to the commission and Lincoln as we have been. And as was mentioned, this does in effect help expedite the timelines involved in ultimately granting a license. So I think that's positive as well. Any public input? Okay, hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 3-29 of the official city code to require a hearing on liquor license applications, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5820 passes on first reading.
To expedite this process with, with no discussion against it, I would recommend we suspend the rules and waive readings two and three.
Okay, motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present, voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5820 is adopted.
All right, item thirty-six, would look for a motion to consider approval of change order Number 1F with Retgen's Construction Incorporated for the Bonita Water Main Loop Project resulting in a net decrease of two thousand two hundred dollars.
Make a motion for consideration of approval of change order Number 1F.
Motion second, and for some background on this, we'll hear from Chad Roberts. Chad, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This year was the water contract that you guys approved back in November seventh. It was for the, in the amount of fifty-two thousand, five hundred, five dollars and fifty-two cents. This was for extending that water main of Bonita Avenue to the Paul Medelman Second Edition. It was about a seven hundred and forty-foot extension of the water main. This water main, some benefits of this was it completed two dead ends to one solid loop, and that improves water quality, makes redundancy in the area, and also aids in some development in that area for houses and businesses and stuff. The change order here was a reflection of some material that was not used on this project, and it came out to the amount of two thousand two hundred dollars. So, city is requesting approval of the change order 1F for a final contract amount of fifty thousand, three hundred and five dollars and fifty-two cents. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
You got any more?
All right, any further discussion, Council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Item thirty-seven, would look for motion to consider approval, consider approval to award a contract to Elkhorn Paving Construction of Norfolk, Nebraska for the Concrete Improvements Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-two to Twenty-three Project-Based Bid for an amount of six hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars, ninety cents.
Motion, Your Honor?
Second that.
Okay, motion second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramus, please.
Mayor and council, this is part of our street repair by contract line item on our CIP. This is all concrete improvements. We had estimated about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for this work. It came in a little bit under that. Six hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety cents. We did only have one bidder on that, Elkhorn Paving, from here in Norfolk. The work includes substantial work on Golf View Drive, Center Drive, from Market Lane to Michigan Avenue, Tenth Street, and Ann Avenue, cul-de-sac in that area, and some work on Daris Drive as well. Again, that total, six hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety cents for that work. In addition, we had included a bid alternate on that project for about fourteen hundred and fifty linear feet of curb and gutter repair, primarily on Norfolk Avenue, some within the raised median areas, and some just on the outsides. That bid came in at two hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, which is in the range of about a hundred and seventy dollars a linear foot for that repair. That's about twice what we would normally expect to see for curb and gutter repair. We think that if that's, you know, we're gonna spend that kind of money, that we need to go back and reevaluate what we're doing there and try and capture closer to three thousand linear feet of curb and gutter repair for that same dollar value. So that's, that's our recommendation is to not award the alternate and just award the base bid.
Thank you, Steve.
Would you say, Steve, not to reward what?
Not to award the bid alternate for the curb and gutter repair. And just to award the concrete repair, the six hundred thirty thousand. And then like I say, we want to go back as staff and look at these areas of curb and gutter repair and, and probably do more substantial repair in those areas, get more of it done. And we were doing five-foot, ten-foot, twenty-foot chunks. I think we need to go back and look at it more in a hundred-foot chunk minimum type situation and, and just get more work done. Some of this, there was a reasonable amount of this through the downtown area. We're also having conversations on some daylighting at, at the intersections. More specifically, some daylighting at the mid-block crossings. That means getting ADA accessible mid-block crossings in. So we, we want to go back and just look at that more holistically.
When do these projects start, Steve?
These would start, we haven't met with the contractor. I, I would say, I think Elkhorn's looking for a pre-construction meeting late February and, and starting when they're, when the weather allows them to get out there and start.
This was four primary areas, right, Steve? Golf View, Center, Daris, Tenth and Market Lane?
Golf View, this would be the west, more the western end of Golf View. There's probably two or three blocks in there, I don't remember exactly. But a substantial amount of work on Golf View, Center Drive in that area, between the two malls and behind, behind the mall, as well as Michigan Avenue. Tenth Street and Ann Avenue is a cul-de-sac that's got some work that needs to get done. And Daris Drive is right in that same area as that cul-de-sac.
Okay. Any further discussion? Public input. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, item number thirty-eight, the promotion to consider approval of change order Number Three with United Contractors Incorporated for the First Street Bridge and Instream Improvements Project, resulting in a net decrease of a hundred and three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
Mayor and council.
We need motion yet, please.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of change order Number Three.
Second.
Motion second, and to kick off discussion on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramus.
Thanks, Mayor. While we're getting Shane Segal, the engineer of record, up here on the phone, it sounds like he might, he might be there.
Shane's on the phone. Can you hear Shane?
I can hear you, yes. Thanks, Mayor.
This, this change order has to do with the drop structures that are being built in the Norfolk River from Hy-Vee north up to Elm Avenue or north to the railroad structure. After we put the first two structures in, in place, one of the things that occurs is some testing with those. And we had folks come in with, with river kayaks and stuff and do some testing on that. And as, kind of as a function of that, that was the first structure north of Norfolk Avenue. People went away and started carrying a message here about the potential for riversurfing, which is what you see here on the screen. This is slide one of Shane, a presentation that Shane Segal had put together. Pat and I had had some, had visited a little bit about that. Nathan Powell got engaged in that conversation. We engaged Shane in that conversation. He was aware of that and had knowledge of that through their sister company, the Rec, which is the Recreation Engineering and Planning. And so we pursued, pursued this conversation, and I'm bringing this to you as a potential change to the river project. This would combine Structures Number One and Number Two into one structure. And so Pat, Pat can answer some questions around that. He has knowledge out of the Denver area on a very, on a, exactly this, this type of recreation. We're gonna use kind of old technology here. Shane is on the phone. He is, again, the engineer of record. He's the gentleman that did the design on the existing river upstream improvements. Shane is gonna talk to some of these slides. He's gonna introduce himself and his company. He's gonna talk through some of these slides. Shane, you're going to let me know when you want to go from slide to slide, and I will advance from slide to slide. So Shane is not actively engaged on his end in any way. He is just on the phone. So Shane, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Go ahead and introduce yourself and start walking us through here. And I've got just kind of the front slide with your company names on it.
Thank you, Stephen, for the introduction. My name is Shane Segal. I'm with Riverwise Engineering. As Stephen said, I'm one of the engineers on the project and I'm managing the in-stream portion of this larger Johnson's Park and First Street Bridge replacement project. Like Stephen said, we have a potential opportunity here that we would like to bring to the council today. And I'm gonna just spend maybe three to four minutes going over three or four slides to give you a little introduction to the possibilities and then open the floor for questions. As Stephen said, we would be teaming with our sister company, Recreation Engineering and Planning. We've been working together for about fifteen years. They just designed, built, and are currently testing the wave that you can see in this picture here. This is a, a surfing-specific wave. Right now in the picture, you can see a board surfer on there. There's no reason that it can't be used by boogie boards, kayaks, canoes, any sort of craft that can surf. So it is a multifunctional wave, but it is very specific for surfing recreation. Stephen, will you take the next slide, please? Okay, the next slide here is another picture of the wave. This is new technology in riversurfing that we think would be a great fit in Norfolk. The current project that we have out there includes eight structures. Four of them have already been built using traditional hydraulic jump technology. And like Stephen said, we've been product testing on those. We're excited to introduce those to the public this summer. Providing a variety in a specific surfing wave has the potential to create a one-of-a-kind park in Norfolk. This surfing wave will be different from the other features. And like I said, what you can see in the picture is a good example. Your site is particularly well-suited for this type of a feature. Next slide, please. The site conditions that make it so well-suited is that your project includes a channel that has near-complete water control, meaning the water can be turned on and off when needed for construction and modifications. Possibly when I'm done here, Pat could give a little explanation about the, the gates and the potential improvements that's gonna happen with those. We do believe there's budget to complete the structure. Stephen's gonna get into the budget a little more, and I'll touch on it. There is sufficient drop in the area for this type of a structure, often in the Midwest. We have lots of water, but we generally struggle to find enough hydraulic gradient to create whitewater. So i- in your situation, we have that drop, so that's a, that's probably the biggest benefit. And there's enhanced access in public viewing areas to help showcase the feature. As we all know, it's very close to Norfolk Central Business District, and because of that, brings a real draw. Next slide, moving on to the budget available. This, this feature would combine two structures that have already been designed for the project. So that would be Structures One and Two. So in essence, instead of building those two structures, we're gonna combine them and build one structure. The budget assumes that de-watering and all the testing efforts will be approximately double what it would be for one individual structure. So it's gonna be a wash as far as budget goes. The total current cost of construction for Structures One and Two would be around five hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred dollars. That's a pretty set number. We've already got a contractor for the project. We already have costs for those structures. So we're very confident on that cost specifically. If we combined the two structures, we believe that these funds would be available for this new potential surfing wave structure. Next slide, please, please. So this, this next slide is the potential cost, and on the right side, we have a project budget. It is missing one or two things, and we'll, on our very last slide, we'll bring those back in. But the short summary is, the green part of this spreadsheet is the current cost for the two structures. That's the five hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred dollars. The orange area near the bottom is projected costs, which are at five hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three in this slide. Next slide, which is our pros and cons. Wanted to try to give council a summary of the pros and cons to help with your decision-making process. The specific, specific pros of the project, there's some cost savings. It's not quite sixty thousand just for this, but we'll get into that on the next slide. It's an excellent site, water control, the water control conditions for this type of feature are excellent. It's cutting-edge technology and can be a great draw for the community. And we have a reasonable timeframe, timeframe to complete the design and the contractor coordination prior to construction this spring. North contracting thinks we can probably build this in kind of the April, May timeframe. So we have between now and then to get all the design and everything ready. Some of the cons of, of doing this, it is some new technology. There are always unknowns when you have newer technology when it comes to optimizing the wave and getting just the performance that we want. Your specific site has a lower discharge than other sites, and specifically the site that's shown in the pictures. Lower discharge doesn't give you quite as much power and quite as much energy to create those waves. Approximately half the width of the wave shown is what we think we'll end up with, just given just given the discharge in your channel. Potential change orders are always an issue with construction projects. It has a higher potential for multiple product tests and additional costs that are associated with the site visits, having the engineering and consulting team out there for those. And the future may need periodic tuning to keep the wave at optimal conditions. Those are some of the pros and cons. Next slide is an updated project budget, like I suggested we get into. I think Stephen's going to take over at this point and fill in a couple gaps.
So just so that we understand kind of what would happen here with this change order. Structures One and Two have a total construction cost of five hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars. The combined cost for construction of just a single structure is four hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars, a savings of one hundred and three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Now, to do this, Shane has not gone in and done a design on a combined structure yet. So we would need to, and that's the very last item on the agenda here, would be a contract amendment for Shane to actually design the combined structure. So these items down here at the very bottom of the proposed budget show the additional costs that we would need to incur for some engineering. Forty-five thousand, that would be an hourly, not to exceed the Riverrise to do the design. The next two items would only be needed if we move the, what we call the railroad bridge. So one of the things that's happening as a function of this project is Dan Geary is going to be relocating the railroad bridge that sits there just to the east of the library. He's going to be relocating that bridge downstream along the range of about two hundred and fifty feet, maybe three hundred feet. If, as a function of combining these two structures into one structure, we end up having a conversation about relocating or pushing that railroad bridge upstream, there is a potential for some additional trail design that would need to be incurred from JEO to extend the trail north to the relocated bridge. And then there would be potentially some additional costs for the extension of the trail itself. The decision has not necessarily been made as to whether or not it would be appropriate to move the bridge. But because that is a conversation on the table, we did want to include that cost as potential cost. So if you add up those potential costs of seventy-eight thousand, you get to five hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars, which is still less than the five hundred and eighty thousand dollars that it's going to cost us to build two independent structures. The other thing that I would note in here is we've been very conservative in terms of pricing what we think the combined structure, one single combined structure would be. The one item I'd probably point out in here is this structural concrete low-flow pan. We've probably got a factor, a safety factor, and they're close to two in terms of what that will likely cost as a function of final design. So there is, again, this four hundred and seventy-six, we think, is very fat and very conservative in terms of what our ultimate cost would be for that. And so, as the design would occur, we see the actual cost coming down. It's hard to predict exactly what that could be. It could be, you know, that this total cost is five hundred thousand if we don't move the railroad bridge. Ultimately, it could be somewhere south of that in the four hundred and seventy-five thousand range. Ultimately, we're very confident that building two, combining the two structures and building one is going to be a cost savings for the project. I think the conversation that we're really putting before you is, is this an amenity? And Shane, I'm going back up to the slide here that just talks new technology so we can see this picture in front of us. Is this an amenity that is desirable? Nathan Powell is unable to be here. He is supportive of this. Nathan would like to see this added. It is a very unique amenity. There aren't very many of these. Shane, what do you estimate right now? Maybe a half a dozen, ten of these within the United States?
Yeah, in our country, there's five or less.
So with that, I think we open it up to questions from council.
I have one. So this goes, they go side to side, back and forth?
Correct. They go back and forth.
And this is the first drop structure?
This would be drop structure one, just south of the railroad bridge.
So there wouldn't be kayakers coming?
They could. You could come downstream and navigate this. You could come downstream and stop and portage around this.
Right. So as a skiing, you've got to be aware of your surroundings. Also, does this come from the stakeholders?
Just clarifying this, there would be a put-in downstream of this first drop structure. So you could avoid using that as the first.
So downstream of this, since we're combining Structures One and Two, the next downstream structure would be Structure Three. Structure Three is about a hundred feet upstream of First Street.
I just wanted to clarify that.
So does this come from the stakeholders, or who brought this to our attention?
Again, I would say, yes, stakeholders, if you're referring to the people that came up here and were actually using it. And there was a group of UNL students that came up here and jumped on there with their river kayaks. They were kind of a short sport kayak. And that was the very first thing they did, was they were obviously trying to surf the tailwater in Structure Seven. And so, some conversation with them that led, Pat was there. Pat's, again, Pat's son in Denver has experience with these surfing waves. I would point out that what you see in this picture, this is about thirty feet wide. Our structure would be about fifteen feet wide, so it'd be about half the width. This is running somewhere in the range of four hundred and eighty CFS. We'd be running in the range of one hundred and sixty to two hundred and twenty-five CFS. So about half, half the width that you see here.
That actually kind of was one of my questions is, so we have five of these in the United States. How many are built on a fifteen-foot-wide stream? It seems awfully narrow.
Shane, you want to answer that?
I mean, I don't know the dimensions of all of them around the country, but the one specifically that Stephen mentioned, that Pat's son has experienced in Denver, has a very similar width. And that width is sufficient for people to have this positive recreational experience. So I personally do not think that that is a limiting factor. What's a bigger limiting factor is that if we have long periods where the flow in the channel is less than what we're expecting, this one hundred and sixty CFS, i.e. we have some drought conditions, that feature, the value of the wave goes down. It's still navigable, but people will not be able to come out there and get a high-quality surfing experience. They'll just have to wait until they get those higher discharges.
I would add to that.
Pat, can you come forward, please?
And Pat, you'll need to sign in and tell us who you are.
I don't do this very often. I told Steve when I started, I'm not going to the council meeting.
Look where that got you.
I'll finish that when I'm done, if that's all right. First of all, I'd like to mention that the numbers that he gave are very conservative, I think. And presently, with the project, we are running under budget. I'm not sure how much, but I know we're basically on the rock placement alone. This, what we're talking about, this surfing hand, maybe some of it got out because of me and my son. But I've been getting phone calls already because it's such a unique thing. And it's, I don't know that it's a new sport, but it's becoming popular. There are some indoor ones. Talking about, Shane mentioned water control and why he's excited about our project, and so am I, is it's more unique because most of the structures out there that are outside are dependent on rainfall, on a natural river. And you need certain flows to make that wave and to make it right. In our situation, and Shane's not come across this before, we have gates. Even this year during a drought, we can adjust the flow to exactly one hundred and fifty-six cubic feet per second if we need to. And in October, we plan to, we're in the middle of evaluating our flood control, particularly after 2019. And part of that is our floodgates. And in October, we're going to revamp the floodgates. Right now, you have to almost manually lift them up and down, but we're going to put in some new shafts, check the gates, make them seal better. And we're going to install an actuator so you can actually set the flow so that Steve could even do it from his phone. And that would make these, all these structures, flow more accurately for a longer period of time. And it would be a really unique situation, I think, not only in Nebraska, but in the Midwest. The Geary Bridge, we might have to move that, but I'm not sure. And that is something that we have to look at in terms of how much room is underneath of it, if it's above or below the structure. And I did send, they're working, Dan Geary's working with Minelli Wagner right now, and I gave them the last bit of information they needed for scour construction of their abutments. So that hurdle has been taken care of. And I have to tell them, though, whether we are going to combine these structures or not because that might affect the design of their abutment construction. So I'm kind of waiting to see what happens tonight. And I would also entertain any questions that you may have.
I got a couple. To make this structure, do we have the materials already to do this? It sounds like we're going to combine, but that looks a lot smoother than the rocks we have.
Yes, we have. In fact, we'll be using less, less sheet pile, less rock, and everything we need is there already. And I've talked, I've ran those numbers by both the prime contractor and North Construction, who's actually placing the rock. And they thought those numbers looked pretty well also, in terms of cost.
So there's no new rock that would have to be purchased?
No.
So by combining these, it sounds like we have extra rock, very large extra rock, probably.
We only have a little over sixty percent of the rock on-site, the big rocks. Our goal is to use approximately seventy-five percent. I don't know that we would have used that many. My object to use that many is because if we don't use seventy-five percent, I believe that it's written into the contract that they can renegotiate a price, which they would go higher if we don't use all the rocks. So Steve and I have been looking at some locations where we might, like up by the YMCA Bridge, there's some places where we do have some scour, and we might place some rock in there. So there is quite a bit of cost saving, so if we only use seventy-five percent of the rock that's been designed. And another bit of information, starting tomorrow, I believe they're going to start hauling the very big rock, the thirty-ton rock. And they've got to load them with a crane and bring them on a low buoy, and they're going to start putting them in by First Street. So if you want to go out and see how big they are, starting tomorrow, you might want to go take a look.
Pat, so the contractor has been consulted on the potential of this?
Yes, I've been in discussion with him all along.
Looking at...
That's Proudy Construction, by the way, that's hauling the rock.
Looking at the numbers that were provided, if I calculate it right, I'm just doing it by hand, no calculator or anything, but it looks like there's about a, maybe only a twenty-five thousand dollar savings after engineering costs. And I could be off a little bit, and I know you're estimating that those might be high numbers.
When we started looking at this initially, we probably wouldn't have brought it if it was going to cost more. That would have been a tougher conversation. Absolute worst case, this is break-even. We think we're going to see a hundred thousand dollar savings as a function of this. As presented right now, yeah, it's about twenty-six thousand, thirty thousand if you put in all of this stuff down here. As Pat said, we don't know yet whether we're going to need to move the bridge. One of the things that you were talking about, as you looked in that picture and saw all that concrete, it's this structural concrete low-flow pan. That's what the water goes over, as it goes over that waterfall. We have a really big number here. Again, we just wanted to put a conservative number there. Once Shane has a design, it could conceivably be half of that. And there's some other numbers in here that are a little heavy. But again, when we go into this type of an approach, we want to deliver a message that we've looked at this very conservatively. We're giving you numbers that we're very confident we're going to beat in the end, and it's still a cost savings.
Okay. Couple more things. I wrote a few things down, so sorry about this, guys, if I'm taking up a lot of time. But to me, there's still a question when I read one bullet point that says higher potential for multiple products tests and additional cost for the site visits. We don't have a clue what that can come to.
Right now, as a function of the next item, which would be the amendment for the design and some additional construction services, that's all in this forty-five thousand for this structure, for this combined structure. I'll zoom back in on that.
Is JEO's number solid?
I did talk to JEO. They thought that number was solid. And again, it would be pretty minor if we moved this structure up fifty feet, and we got to do a fifty-feet of trail extension on either side. That's, you know, whether or not we'd necessarily even have to engage them is still up in the air.
What about the concrete deteriorating, and how long's that longevity, I guess, of that concrete to create that wave structure?
We're using State 47B concrete, same as they use on their highways. I would guess it would last way longer than the highways because it's underwater and the moisture, the hydration, you're going to get a lot more strength. And there's no traffic on it. You know, if we got the right air and training admixtures, I think our freeze thaw is going to be good. I expect these structures to be here long after I'm gone.
There's no reason they shouldn't last seventy-five to, I'd say, one hundred, one hundred and twenty-five years.
What about, I mean, we're talking about the water flow and the wave that was shown on the pictures. It sounds to me like it wouldn't be maybe even half that height, I'm guessing, but I don't know. Am I thinking correctly?
Shane, I have the slide up here that says technology and riversurfing is now available. The question is on the, what would the height be of the wave we would be designing?
So the plan is to build a very similar wave to this. So what happens is, we're basically going to have about half the water discharge, but we're going to have half the width also. And so by reducing both of those proportionally, we should have a very similar wave to what you're seeing. So the idea that just having less discharge results in a smaller wave is not correct.
Shane, this is approximately a three-foot drop as compared to the others that are a foot and a half, correct?
That's correct.
And one other thing, so I sat in on the subcommittee. I had some of the same questions, too, because I'm not familiar with riversurfing. Same questions about width and constraints and conflicts. But talking through it, I guess another question, and you can help illustrate this, Shane. My concern was I didn't want kayakers and tubers who will primarily be using this to have conflicts necessarily with this use. But the answer was that doesn't necessarily happen here. And the layout of what we're doing, given that there's a put-in downstream, helps mitigate some of those concerns. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate.
Yeah, I get where you're coming from, Josh. I'm thinking... You're, yeah, I get where you're coming from, Josh. I'm, I'm thinking, were the drop structures kind of supposed to be gradual as you go down, so we're putting kind of the biggest one at the beginning? Am I thinking right? And there's two drop-ins before this one that you won't know if there's somebody surfing on that when you drop in on North First Street or Winter Park, now that we just went through that discussion. I'd say I have some concern that kayakers going down there and a surfer being on that, and potential of collision. With only sixteen feet wide, but I guess it depends on how many people are using it.
There, there are signs that are designed for this, and they have them on the other recreational areas also, and they're in the plans. The surfers have to give right-of-way to the kayakers. And as you can see, they're always looking upstream, so if they see them coming, they, they've got to get out of the way. It's just like driving on the road, I guess, or going around on a roundabout.
I'd compare it to the skate park, and we don't always hear that goes well, well.
There we go, yeah.
Think, the thing about it, too, it's like wakeboarding, you don't, much of a, you're not, it's not like, like you see a surfer going down a, you're kind of trying to keep yourself, you know, in a small.
Well, you won't see me doing it, I'm too old.
But, so in, in talking to somebody who knows a little bit more about this than I do, the whole river surfing concept, I guess this is a pretty popular thing elsewhere, there's half, what'd you say, half dozen, dozen in the U.S., but Germany, this is a pretty common thing, I'm told. I think it helps bring a new element of attraction to a park that hopefully will bring people into town to, to spend money. And I think it brings some variety to the kayakers and tubers, too, to have a drop that's a little bit different than the rest.
I got a question from this side of the aisle right here. We talked about, as a con, periodical fine-tuning, you know, because it's a new technology, so they gotta periodically fine-tune that. Is that expensive, and will that limit people's experience, because they'll have to, they've gotta shut it down and bring it back up?
Okay, so there's two kinds of fine-tuning, and I'm trying, I'll try to address both of them. The fine-tuning thus far has been when we've tested these, we've seen how they've reacted. We had the U N L professor come up with some of his students, and Shane has helped with that, him and Ty and some of his people. So we adjust and, and make new fe, every, every feature's supposed to be a little different. And as we test them, there's actually a contract item with money in it that we can come back in and readjust the rocks or do whatever, which we have done. I've done it, what I didn't like was there wasn't enough rock on the sides. So if the water was at a certain height, the kayaker couldn't exactly, he might want to try to go down the fish ladder or something. So we adjusted that. So that is part of the fine-tuning. A different kind of fine-tuning is this wave, is I think maybe what you're asking about.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so there is one in Colorado where they have two steel plates, and they actually go off to the side, and they can crank it and make it go up and down and fine-tune the wave. Only certain people can do that. In our case, once it's built out of concrete, we can fine-tune it by adjusting the cubic feet per second of water going over the structure, which essentially does the same thing. And that, that's how we would fine-tune it. Shane would watch it or something, I would watch it, and may even have a surfer in there, and we would adjust the flow, and they'd go, okay, that's where it needs to be.
Okay. All right, you open me up for another question. Well, we, about the, the fish bypass, if you want to call it that, how does this affect that?
We had Jeff Chapman come out, but I don't know that he'd want me to use his name and look at him. Essentially, they were, they were saying we didn't need them, but they are designed in there, and we are putting them in. And Shane is in his design, in fact, he sent us a previous design, I have it on my computer, of a, a river surfing structure. So I've looked at it, but he's, in his design, he'll redesign the fish ladder for this structure also, so that it will be functional.
Seems to me like a lot of people will use this, it's pretty unique. So is there a right-of-way from side to side, or they just do the same thing, they go, I mean, it seems kind of fifteen feet, isn't very, it's pretty narrow, like Frank, Frank said. And so I, I guess, I'm just trying to see how, how it works with kids and adults and going back and forth across the wave, you know, how does that?
No, you, you can't have a lot of people in there at one time, particularly on a fifteen footer.
Can, can, can two go at one time?
Like Steve said, they were trying to river surf on one of our previous structures, on number seven, actually, with their kayaks, and there was two of them in there at one time. I'm not sure, I, I'm gonna say it probably depends on your skill level.
I, I can see it being very unique, and a lot of people trying to use it and wanting to try it out. I would let my son try it for sure, it'd be kind of fun, so I guess I'm just trying to think of how it works. I mean, I'm a little concerned about new technology and, and unknowns and contractor change orders, but it seems pretty unique, kind of a big draw, so I'm kind of interested.
I'm gonna guess they're probably gonna, as they stand there, they're probably gonna let one person go at a time.
I have provided here an aerial image or plan view. You can see, structure, structure number one is up here just south of the railroad tracks. Here's the old railroad through Trest Bridge, it sits here. This would be structure one, and that would be combined down here with structure two, and those would go somewhere probably about right here would be where the combined structure is located.
So from eight to seven, right?
We'd be going from eight to seven.
Can you point out two?
As you would come downstream, you'd be able to get out here, and we'll build a portage. It will extend this trail here a little bit, so that you could get out, portage around that if you want to.
Can you point out, too, where the Gary Bridge is on there?
The, the, so this existing trestle bridge here is intended to be relocated just downstream of structure two, it's right here. And then this dark gray would be the trail that's approaching and exiting that bridge. So if we combine these up into here, there's a possibility we might want to move that. Then there's a, I would say it's, I don't know, there's a strong possibility it just stays right where it is, too, and there's no movement of that. From here, from here, you can easily see downstream and see all the activity that's going on down through here, as well as be able to view upstream, so.
What, what would be the purpose possibly moving the location?
It has more to do with viewing this, you know, even now, you can see where it is in proximity to this structure. So just being able to view people engaged in that, in that particular structure, as they're surfing over it or kayaking over it. It's just an observation platform more than anything.
There will be people watching, eh, there's a lot of them watching. But the other reason we might want to move it is we want to make a recovery area below the structure. There's a pool right behind it, it won't be that deep. The one on seven, I know the kayakers kept size twice, and when they stood up, it was only about this deep, and that's about how deep the pool will be. But then it gets even shallower as you go further down. But if someone's river surfing, and of course, there's gonna be people falling, we want them to be able to just stand up and get out. There might be a constriction because of the abutments of that bridge, but I'm not sure yet, I haven't seen the design.
That brings a question up that I have on this. Kind of going back to square one, why are we changing this? Because this was kind of designed for kayakers, I would think, right? Extra structure, I think, would be nice for them to have an extra structure. And surfing, I mean, my concern is, I don't think there's a lot of surfers in Nebraska that, they're probably not gonna be on the board. They're probably gonna be in the water more than on the board. Maybe I'm wrong there, but I just don't know if I want this to interfere with the kayakers. It just seems like that's why we did this to begin with. So why change it?
I can't answer that question. I, I did not come up with it. I, I happen to agree with it, but you're right, there will be a lot more kayakers thins, but that may change.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, I think as we, as we built the first ones and were testing them, this conversation came up. It was not something that we had broached during the original design, but it was something that we did have time to have a conversation around and present, present to council before we just walked away from it. You know, I, I think there is value to it, from a, from a unique amenity to a, to an attraction to Norfolk. We have heard from a regional kayak group that they are extremely excited about coming in and, and spending the summer, next summer here in Norfolk. Nathan, just to speak for Nathan Powell, our Parks and Recreation Director, he, he is in, in favor of the, the combination. Now, he's certainly not here tonight to participate in this conversation, but he did say, as he left, he did like the idea of the combination.
I, I would say I had some of the same questions, Frank, about losing one drop after we had planned for eight. It, you know, what does that do to the appeal to kayakers? And talking through the conversation with Shane, and some people knew a little bit more about these being added into kayak parks, I guess I came away convinced that it, it does add, that three-foot drop adds another element of attraction to kayakers and tubers themselves. And Shane, can you, because I, that's the question that I posed to you, I think, from what, where you see these, these parks and the addition of this kind of technology. I asked that exact question, does it detract from use by kayakers and tubers? Can you address that?
Yeah, Mayor, let me expand on that, thank you very much. First of all, it's really important for everybody to understand that three out of four people that visit these types of parks around the country are not actually the surfers that we're seeing in this picture, they're not the kayakers. They're people that come to sit by the banks of the river, enjoy the water, go for a walk, and just be a part of the scene, the excitement, and the outdoor value that comes from these parks. So I want to make it really clear that those are the real people that get drawn to these, these waves are features that bring those people out of the woodwork to, you know, support the community. Yep, that's my first point. The other thing I really wanted to expand on is that these waves, although you're seeing pictures of board surfers, these waves are commonly used by boogie boarders, canoeists, and regular, everyday kayakers. So almost all of your river users will get more value out of this type of a feature, especially when they get to the level where they're skilled enough to come out and surf these waves. The only people that they don't necessarily bring, quote, "more value" to would be someone like an inner tuber or somebody that's in a craft that cannot actually surf a wave. That's the second point. The third point of this is that these features are all designed to be usable and navigable by the novice user. So we want to make them usable for everybody that's coming down the river. And there's no reason that someone as simple as just an inner tuber, someone that really has no experience at all, cannot come down and also get a lot of value out of these features, just floating the river and using them. That being said, we did want to make sure that this feature was as isolated as possible, so those that look at it and say, hey, that's a little too aggressive for me, they still have the option to put in just downstream of it. But that being said, our, our goal is to create a safe, navigable feature for all river users, and as we've all been speaking about, a wave that's usable for those that want something a little more unique. Now, last point, the question about going from eight structures down to seven. So the average whitewater park in the United States, I would say, has anywhere from two to four features. And this is one of the big things that we were excited to bring to Norfolk. You guys had all this gradient, we were able to put these eight features out there. So your park is already gonna stand above and beyond just because of the number of features that we have. And our, you know, our recommendation has been, hey, going from eight to seven in a park with this many features and potentially adding such a high-value feature is a good choice for your community.
Thank you, Shane.
Shane, in subcommittee, you had a recommendation on the location of that bridge for safety reasons. Can you tell us what that was?
I think he's referring to that Dan Gary Bridge, Shane.
Shane, I don't know if Shane heard the question.
Yeah, so you want to talk a little bit, Shane, about once we combine the structures, or if the structures are combined, and somebody falls out of a kayak, falls out a canoe, and they need to recover and get to shore, and just how that bridge location factors into that recovery, where it is in relation to the recovery area?
Okay, so the, the structure location, we want to basically move it about halfway between the current location of structures number one and number two. So I don't know if Stephen can pull up that plan view again. But we want to put it at the end of the straightaway between those two structures. And what that does is that gives people that try to navigate it, or they're surfing, and they get dumped, it gives them plenty of time to exit the river and egress and walk back up, or just basically collect all their gear and get out before they get down to structure number three. Now, how the bridge interacts with that. So the bridge, the biggest issue with the bridge, which Pat touched upon, is that the bridge is a viewing point, and people will love to stand on top of that bridge and look down and see people surfing on these features. The optimal location for that bridge is just upstream of the structures. So if you go back to one of the pictures of the surfers, if you imagine somebody in the upstream, just upstream of this feature, looking down on these surfers, they'd get, they get the best view of really what's happening down in the pool. Now, it's also valuable to potentially have a bridge just downstream of the structure, so people are looking upstream at the features. So we've discussed that with the recreation committee, like Pat and Stephen suggested. We need to have some more discussions once we place the location of the structure. But having the bridge right in the vicinity of it is really valuable from an aesthetic and a recreational standpoint. Now, the bridge itself does not affect the safety of the feature, no impact on safety or navigability. The bridge piers will be outside of the high-velocity areas and areas where there's potential for any sort of safety hazard or safety entrapment. So the bridge itself is not a safety factor, and we can really put it upstream or downstream of the feature.
So I've put a red box here, Shane. So Shane was describing the straightaway. So the river comes down in a fairly, fairly straight fashion down to about where this red box is, and then it goes into a curve. So this is the general area that they're looking at for the combined structure. And then either the, the, the old railroad trestle just downstream of that as a viewing or upstream of that as, as viewing downstream. You know, ultimately, ultimately, that's, I, I guess a decision we'll have, we'll have to make as to whether we just leave it where it is. The more you move it up around the corner, the harder, you know, the less you're gonna see downstream into this area.
And, and the less you're gonna see it from that area, from First Street, too. There's aesthetic value from people there looking upstream as well. So, yeah, have questions about moving the bridge or leaving it where it is?
I'd, I'd agree. I'd echo that, I guess, because of potential extra cost, too.
One final question. So taking two structures, you're making one, why is that one doubled in cost? You're using less sheet piling, less rock, I would think, less labor?
Right, so some of it's, it's about, it was five hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the construction of the, the two structures, and it's about four hundred and, and we're estimating about four hundred and seventy-six thousand. So a hundred and three thousand dollars less for actual construction cost. Again, there's, there's the, you know, there's a forty-five thousand dollar cost for Shane to actually design the combined structure. And then potentially there here are some, some costs if we end up moving that, that bridge and extending the trail to a relocated bridge. And those costs, about thirty-three thousand dollars there. Again, as we, as, because we don't have a design in front of us, we wanted to be heavy in terms of what we're projecting for the combined cost of construction. We're reasonable, I'd say we're very confident that in the end, once we actually have a design, the cost is gonna be less than that.
And, and, I guess my question would be, where's the access to get into the structure and where's the viewing area besides standing on a bridge?
So one of the things we talked about, you'll be able to, originally, this whole bank here was gonna be a wetland, part of the area, we relocated wetlands too. We've moved that wetland relocation or mitigation site way to the north side by First Street where the river actually crosses back into First Street. That's where the wetland's gonna be relocated to. So you'd have this whole observation area. This, this trail sits on top of the old, the old levee wall that runs over here east of this, this old trailer park or west of the trailer park. So you'd be able to sit down and observe all the activity, all of this area down in here would be available for observation. Again, there are some large boulders, those large eight-foot square boulders, rectangular boulders are not shown in here, but there would be four of them in the area of this. A lot of people get on, those are there for observation purposes. People climb on those, sit on those, participate in the, in the activity. They also help create some eddies within the stream itself.
So it'll all be accessible by walking or riding a bike?
Yeah, it, where you see like this is ADA accessible areas to get down in. The trail, as the trail comes under the bridge, this is the trail that was coming under First Street right in here, you'd come under First Street, be able to get backed up onto the trail, cross, cross the bridge if you want to and go back, back down and, and under the bridge again here on the south side of the river.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Do we have any data that shows, like during a drought, that we can hold that 160 number to make these structures?
In, in an extreme drought, where we just, where there's not that much coming from the north, no. You know, it would, it would be just as if the structures aren't there and we have a drought, there's not gonna be much water flowing.
This year was a drought year and right above the gates is that dam out by, on the railroad bridge out by the college.
Yeah.
So that has stored water. It's a perfect place for that to be for our situation. And when we tested, they tested fine this year, but I'm not sure how long we could have maintained that.
Yeah, so the diversion structure, there's a diversion structure in this, inside the levee, and that diversion structure is where the railroad tracks cross the levee north of Benjamin Avenue. There's a great big structure in there and that, that backs water up in the levee and that's, that's when we open up our gates on the Norfolk River, that's, it's that diversion structure that pushes water through. So we have the ability to basically push almost all the water in the levee through town.
Okay, I think we have someone wishing to make a public comment.
Terry Rasmussen. Hi, Shane.
Hi, Terry.
I know that there's, in, in response to your question about the, the flows, I know that there's measurement of the water flow that eventually ends up here, up by Pierce. I don't know if there's anything lower yet, but when you look at the, the levels over the last 30 years, there's very few years that are really low water level. So I think that most of the activities that we've talked about for the, for the river shouldn't be a problem unless it's a really, really drought year. The other thing that I wanted to mention while we're, while I'm up here, and maybe this isn't news to anybody, but I think that this, this project, the river and the park, this isn't really just for the kayakers and it's not just for one type of kayaker.
Hey, Terry.
And it, it.
Terry, can you back up and kind of give like Justin and some people that don't know your involvement with this project, kind of a little bit backstory just of where you're coming from on all this?
I was a member of the riverfront group for the last, I don't know, 10, 10 or 14 years, worked on this project a lot and helped, I met with Shane out in Colorado before anybody else had ever really talked about it with him. And happy to see him become part of this project and, and the project isn't anywhere near what I thought it was gonna be when, when we first started talking about it. This is, is gonna be incredible. But I, I think that by adding this structure, and my, my thought in coming here tonight was I wanted to understand, is this gonna, like Frank was asking about, is this gonna limit what people can, people that can go over this structure? That was one of my concerns. And I was happy to hear that it's not. It's gonna let people go over it with limited ability or go around it if they're concerned about their ability. And it's gonna bring more people to watch it. And I think that variety of use, the people biking, the, the skateboarders that decide, hey, I want to try to do the, the wave, the wakeboarders that like to go up to the lake, maybe they'll stick around here and have some fun here and enjoy the, the river here. That's always been a lot of our dream for this project, that we'll bring a lot of people down to Johnson Park and, you know, bring people and, and bring tourism. I think it's a good project for us and I think this could add to it, this, this change in the structure.
Thank you, Terry. Have you been to a park with one of these three-foot wave drops?
I was in, in Denver and we looked at some, there weren't, people weren't doing this kind of wave surfing, but it was certainly possible. I do get onto the webcams occasionally and watch people with the playboats and, and I think that they would have a blast with this.
Okay. Thank you, Terry.
I just had a question, maybe the opposite of a drought would be a flood. If we have high water flow in the flood control, and you talked about controlling the, the flow that comes down the river to optimize the drop structures and now this new structure, if we have super-high water flow down the flood control, I assume the gates are gonna be wide open to help channel some of that water down the original river to help mitigate the flood? I don't know if that's true or not, but if so, what does that do to this structure hydraulically and then what does it do to the rest of the structures?
Good, good question, Jim. When we are in flood mode or we have high flow, we keep as much as we can in the levee. So our gates allow us, like in 2019, as we were watching water upstream, one of the very first things we did was shut the gates down. We know that when those flood occurrences are happening, we have to use the in, the in-town portion of the channel for water, water storage. The next scenario that didn't happen thankfully, if we would have had a deluge of rain, if we would have had a one or two-inch rain in town, it would have filled up this channel and there was, but no way for that water to get out. Because the gates at the downstream side are pressure closed. As the, as the water volume inside the levee increases, the water just can't get out. So kind of answering your question, if there's a significant event upstream and the levee's flowing, you know, significantly, we would close these gates just, just to allow for in-stream flow within the river.
If you remember in 2019, both sets of gates were closed. I mean, you probably don't know that, but they were. And what happens is it filled up like a bathtub. So there was high water, but there was no flow. You wouldn't have had a wave. The water was just sitting there. And then when we let it out, we let it out slowly so that we don't get erosion. But that's, yeah, that's a good question. So we don't open them when it floods, we actually close the gates.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or discussion, council? I think it's been a good discussion. I think in a lot of ways, I, even though I said I had initial questions about this, I, I came out of it thinking, you know, this is really what we ask staff to do in a lot of ways, find ways to optimize cost savings on projects and be creative, working with designers to do that while also adding value to a project. And I think this proposal does all of those things. So I'm pleased with the thorough discussion we had on this. And is there any other discussion or comments or questions before we vote?
Steve, you think we'll save 103? Remus, you think we're gonna save 103?
I think when we're done with this, it's gonna be, I think we're gonna save six figures when we're all done.
If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Item 39, last but not least, look for a motion to consider approval of letter agreement amendment number two with Riverwise Engineering LLC for the Johnson Park in-stream improvement project for an amount not to exceed $45,000.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second. Motion second. Anything else to say about this? I think we all understand what this is.
I just reiterate that this, this is a, this is not lump sum, this is hourly. So, you know, we'll pay, we'll pay whatever it takes for them to do the work. This is for the design then to combine structure number one and structure number two into one structure. $45,000, it's, again, hourly not to exceed $45,000 for Riverwise Engineering.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Council members present voting in the affirmative.
Very good. With that, we are concluded and adjourned. Thank you, have a good evening.